To put on vibrate, we're about to get started.
Okay, joint public hearing, proposed air permit and proposed national pollution discharge elimination system or NPDES permit, Rocky Glade Fund LLC, Rocky Glade's Pit. Today is April 8th, 2025. It is 6:30 PM. We're at the Chambers County Courthouse, 2 LeFet Street, LeFet, Alabama, 36862. Good evening and welcome to the public hearing on behalf of the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. My name is Tom Burks. I am the designating hearing officer for these proceedings. The role of the hearing officer is limited to ensuring an orderly hearing so that an accurate record of this hearing may be developed for the department's evaluation. I do not make any decisions regarding these proposed permit actions. On behalf of the department, we appreciate your participation in tonight's joint hearing for the proposed issuance of air permit number 302-0022-X001 and the proposed issuance as National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit Number AL0084500 to Rocky Glade Fund LLC for proposed granite quarry known as Rocky Glade's Pit to be located at the intersection of Chambers County Road 389 and Chambers County Road 481, Casita, Alabama, 36852. The purpose of this hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to present oral testimony on the draft permit actions. In addition to oral testimony, the department also will consider all written comments submitted before the close of the public comment period. The department has requested your comments and we appreciate you taking the time to make them known to us. On March 4th, 2025, notice of the date, time, and place and purpose of this hearing was posted on the department's website. In addition, the department sent notices to this hearing by email to individuals and organizations who had previously requested advanced notice of permit proceedings. A copy of the notice and the email distribution list will be entered into the record for these proceedings. Copies of the public notice, permit applications, preliminary determinations, and draft permits have been made available for inspection by the public at the offices of the department at 1400 Coliseum Boulevard, Montgomery, as well as on the department's website. This hearing is open to the public and anyone wishing to present oral testimony or submit a written statement may do so. Lengthy statements or those containing several technical, other, or complex data should be submitted in writing. Summarize of each statement may be presented orally. Each speaker will have five minutes to present their testimony. All testimony and written comments should be factual as possible and should address the subject of this hearing. This hearing is an opportunity for members of the public to offer comments to help ensure that all relevant factors are considered before final permit decision is made. Please be advised, the department is limited to the factors it can consider when making permit decisions and must base the determinations only on whether the permit application has satisfied those requirements of applicable environmental statutes and regulations granted at A.D.M. by the legislature. Persons giving testimony may be questioned by the hearing officer or other department staff to clarify points and develop a better understanding as what is being presented. This proceeding tonight is not an open forum as in question and answer session. The hearing is an opportunity for you to submit comments that you wish the department to consider in the final review of the permit application. However, you may post a comment in the form of question which will be compiled and addressed by the department in its complete response to comments. In addition to oral testimony, written comments may be submitted under the proposed permit action. You do not have to make an oral statement tonight in order to have your written comments considered by the department. Written statements may be submitted to the hearing officer tonight or delivered to the department in Montgomery as directed in the public notice for this hearing. All written statements previously submitted and those received by the department before the end of the public comment period will be included in the hearing record. It is important to note that written comments submitted through postal or electronic mail are given the same consideration as those that are presented in person at this hearing. All oral and written testimony will be included in the hearing record. After giving full consideration to the hearing record, the department will make its final decision on proposed permit action and develop responses to comments for draft permits. The hearing record, final permit determinations, and response to comments will be posted to the department's E5 system. The entire proceeding is being recorded on video to be posted on the department's YouTube channel to make it accessible to the public. Now let us move on to the purpose of this hearing and receive our public comments. The order of finish of persons giving testimony will be as follows. First, a representative of the department's air division, then a representative of the department's water division, then a representative of Rocky Glade Fund LLC, then any elected official or representatives who had registered to speak prior to the start of the hearing this evening. All remaining members of the public will be heard in the order in which they registered onsite at this hearing. I now recognize Ms. Doty Mosley to present a statement on behalf of the department's air division.
Good evening. I am Doty Mosley of the Construction Materials Section, which regulates permitting, compliance, and enforcement activities for quarries for the air division of the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. In addition to me, the department's air division is represented by Mr. Aubrey White, Chief of the Air Division, Mr. Doug Carr, Chief of the Energy Branch, Ms. Pam Hunt, Chief of the Construction Materials Section, and Mr. Shane Jordan, Environmental Scientist. The department exercises authority under the Alabama Air Pollution Control Act and the Alabama Environmental Management Act to administer and enforce Alabama's air pollution control regulations. The department also has the authority to implement federal air pollution control regulations. Rocky Glade Fund LLC has applied for an air permit for a facility that engages in the crushing, screening, and conveying of granite. These processes contain equipment that would be subject to federal news source performance standards. These regulations were developed by the United States Environmental Protection Agency and are uniformly applicable across the country. The department administers these regulations in Alabama. Additionally, the regulations limit emissions of dust from crushers, screens, and conveyor transfer points. Dust from these processes would be controlled by wet suppression systems. The wet suppression systems would be capable of meeting or exceeding all federal and state requirements found under the regulations. In addition, wet suppression systems would be used to minimize dust generated from vehicle traffic within the site. Any dust generated from the facility's operation would be in quantities that would define the facility as a minor source under the state and federal air pollution permitting programs. Based upon our review of the air permit applications for this facility, the department has proposed the issuance of an air permit developed in accordance with applicable state and federal requirements. While the department understands that there are concerns surrounding the siting of a facility such as this, including traffic, noise, property values, and others, the department does not exercise zoning authority and may consider only comments relating to the air quality in its final decision on this request for an air discharge permit. A.D.M.'s authority regarding quarrying operations and other mining operations is limited. The department does not have the authority to regulate other aspects of the mining activity, including blasting. Blasting is regulated by the state fire marshal. The department has made a preliminary determination that compliance by Rocky Glade Fund LLC with the conditions of the proposed air permit would not result in violations of applicable air quality standards designed to protect human health and the environment. This preliminary determination will be reconsidered after all comments are received and reviewed. Thank you.
I now recognize Ms. Skylar Wilson to present a statement on behalf of the department's water division.
Good evening. My name is Skylar Wilson and I am an environmental engineering specialist in the Mining and Natural Resource Section of the Stormwater Management Branch and the Water Division of the Department of Environmental Management. The Mining and Natural Resource Section conducts permitting, compliance, and enforcement activities for the discharge of treated effluent from mining facilities within the state of Alabama. The department's water division is also represented this evening by Mr. James Carlson, Chief of the Stormwater Management Branch, Mr. William McLemons, Chief of the Mining and Natural Resource Section, Ms. Angie Boatwright, and Mr. Stephen Sandlin, both who are Senior Environmental Engineering Specialists in the Mining and Natural Resource Section. The department exercises authority under the Alabama Water Pollution Control Act and the Alabama Environmental Management Act to administer and enforce Alabama's water pollution control and water quality regulations. The department also has the authority to implement federal water pollution control regulations. The draft National Pollution Discharge Elimination System or NPDES permit issuance proposes authorization for discharges of treated effluent from the granite quarry and associated regulated activities through five proposed outfalls to waters of the state of Alabama identified as an unnamed tributary to Double Branch and an unnamed tributary to Hallowaki Creek. The unnamed tributary to Double Branch and the unnamed tributary to Hallowaki Creek are classified as being suitable for fish and wildlife. Based upon review of the NPDES permit issuance application for this facility, the department has proposed to issue the NPDES permit, which was developed in accordance with applicable state and federal requirements which are designed to be protective of water quality. A.D.M. does not exercise zoning authority and may only consider comments relating to water quality in its final permitting decision. Similarly, A.D.M. understands other legitimate concerns that may be held by the public, including truck traffic, property values, aesthetics, proximity to residences, noise, and blasting. A.D.M.'s authority regarding mining operations is limited to the regulation of the discharges of effluent to waters of the state. The department does not have the authority to regulate the mining activity itself or these other important topics. The department has made a preliminary determination that compliance by Rocky Glade Fund LLC with the terms and conditions of the proposed NPDES permit will not result in violations of applicable state water quality standards which are designed to protect human health and the environment. This preliminary determination will be reconsidered after all comments are received and reviewed. Thank you.
I now recognize Justin Laney to present a statement on behalf of Rocky Glade Fund Tap the mic. He'll come on.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Justin Laney. Unfortunately, Kyle, my boss, could not be here today because his dog was severely harmed. First, I want to say that we are willing to comply with, and we have to comply with everything that A.D.M. has set forth to this point as far as regulation goes on air and Aggregate material will be the product of this quarry. It is used for roads, concrete, logging roads, and numerous other building materials. For example, asphalt is made of roughly 90 to 95% aggregate rock. Concrete consists of roughly 80 to 85% of aggregate rock. So every building, road, facility requires aggregate rock to even exist. Due to trucking costs, the price of aggregate material increases drastically every mile that you transport that material. Every 25 miles, the price of aggregate rock tends to double. And that was told to me by a head geologist on our team. Rocky Glade Fund wants to hear, pledge to give back to the community through donations to local fire departments and school systems. It's easy to see that, and no offense to any Department of Education, but the funding for the school system has been failed due to just lack of community growth over time. And that is nothing against Chambers as a community, but Rocky Glade Fund pledges to give back to that community because that community will allow us to do this going After that, all we can do is comply with federal regulations and state regulations, and we pledge to do so.
I will now proceed to the receipt of public comments from elected officials. First, I recognize David Eastridge. Please step up to the microphone and clearly restate your name and office that you hold.
I am David Eastridge, Chambers County Commissioner, Chairman at the present time. Good evening and welcome to Chambers County. My name is David Eastridge, Chairman of the Chambers County Commission. On behalf of the commission and the citizens of Chambers County, we thank you for scheduling the meeting we're having and also the extra hour to give the opportunity for citizens to speak to them. As you are aware, the citizens of Chambers County are very concerned with the possibility of Rocky Glades being permitted in Chambers County. However, these citizens have been attending our commission meeting since October 2024. Since then, 19 citizens have spoke in concern of the quarry to be located in Casita. We welcome our constituents and we also listen to their concerns. And by overwhelming response, they're very concerned about the quality of life that they're going to be changed in Chambers County. Because of the natural resources and the previous significant social, economical, and environmental benefits that they are also enjoying now. I ask you please allow each citizen's time enough to speak and because they have taken their time and travel to Chambers County. And we are counting on you, A.D.M., to make the right decision. Thank you again for the time. I've tried to get around to thanking each of you for taking your time.
I now recognize Representative Debbie H. Wood. Please step up. Please step up to the microphone and clearly restate your name and office that you hold.
Thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer. My name is Debbie Wood and I'm the State Representative for District 38, and I represent most of the people that sit behind me. And I'd like to give you a little background. First of all, I left my notes, so that may be good for you and that you have a time set up is really good for you. So just to give you a brief history and thank you, A.D.M. members, for being here. I know this is not what you set out to do every day, but we thank you so much for coming to this community. 2002, I became an elected official right here. I was a county commissioner. And I was a county commissioner in an urban area in District 6, which is the valley area. So I didn't have dirt roads, I didn't have animal issues, but what I quickly learned was we had to work together to make the best decisions for the whole county. It didn't matter which district we represented. And now I find myself doing the same thing as a state representative. These issues are very hard for I know us and you because you have a set of guidelines that you go by. Now, the main reason that I'm here today is to talk about something that you've already all brought up, and that's water. This is a very rural area. The residents are all on wells and septic tanks. And if you come to Chambers County and you talk to the water authorities, there is no way to possibly get these people water if their wells run dry. That is the reason that I'm here. Because at 6 o'clock in the morning, when they turn on their water and their children can't take a shower, I'm going to get those phone calls. So are the county commissioners. We are a rural community. We have an antiquated water system. And really, the only way that we could find water and make it available for these people would probably be to go to another county and beg them to run the water source to get them the water that we know they're going to need. You've already brought up the fact that we need water to keep the dust down. We know that we need water to help blast. We know that we need water to run this whole operation. Where's it going to come from? There's no large water source, but there are underground springs. Those underground springs not only give water and a basic necessity to the people that are behind me, but they feed their animals, they feed their crops. We're a rural community and we use those things to make a living. Water is extremely important to us, and that's the reason that I'm here. Yes, we do need materials. I know you're looking at that. We need those materials. But I will say this and try to remain extremely calm. I find it very offensive what the gentleman said about our school system and his ability to come in and help us pay for something that he knows absolutely nothing about. That is not what we need. We've cared for our community for a long time. We may not get everything right, but we care for each other and love one another. And this is something that has really torn us apart. Guess what? I also represent the gentleman that's leasing the land. But I have to make a decision to do what's best for the majority of the people in this county that I love and that I represent. I thank you once again for giving us an opportunity to talk about the issues that we know will affect this county, and water is the biggest issue. Thank you for your time.
I now recognize William Montgomery. Please step up to the microphone, clearly restate your name and office that you hold, and I believe you're speaking for yourself tonight.
That's correct. My name's William Montgomery. Bill's what I usually go by, my mother. I knew I was in trouble, and my mother said, "William." So you put me in trouble here. Anyway, what I want to comment on is in regards to the water issue there. Regarding the permit, this permit, in under Part 2, Other Requirements, Responsibilities, and Duties, Section C, Number 7, Property and Other Rights, and in my comments, I've given a complete citation to that reference there. Here's my comment. I believe this quarry would violate the above cited permit and should not be approved. The water source for the proposed quarry is underground water. My research found that this water is trapped in underground pockets and was accumulated over thousands of years. The water is not replenished quickly by underground streams. Consequently, when it is used up, it would be gone for centuries. Most of the A.D.M. water regulations are concerned with how water is used in the quarry but not where it's sourced. There is no public water source in this area around or near the proposed quarry site. The farm families and farm activities rely exclusively on this underground water source. The public water providers in the areas have indicated there is too little population in this area to economically install a community water system at this time or the foreseeable future. When the quarry taps into the underground water source, it will use large quantities of water, the same water source as the farmers. When this water is gone for the quarry, the water is also gone for the farmers. The quarry cannot simply, can, the quarry can simply close up shop and move on, but the farm families left behind are destroyed. They will not be destroyed by their own failures and actions, but the results of someone else's actions. Their families, homes, and farms cannot be restored by money for the damages done by the quarry. They were here first, and their concerns should come first. Do not approve this application.
I now recognize Suzanne Montgomery. Please step up and restate your name clearly.
I'm Suzanne Montgomery. I live in the town of Casita. I'm the councilperson on the town council. I'm going to reiterate, I'm afraid, that some of the things have already been said, but I think we're all very passionate about this water situation, so I'm going to read my statement here. Can you imagine a life without water? What if you woke up one morning to find you didn't have enough water to fill your coffee pot or enough water pressure for a full shower or wash a load of clothes? So you walk down to the small pond that has been your water source for your cattle for over several decades and find that it is only half as full today as it was yesterday and afraid that by tomorrow or next week, that same pond water will even be lower. With these very real possibilities facing you and real ongoing threat to your family and way of life, where do you go for help? Would you seek help from the same government or government agency that issued permits to a rock quarry that are now responsible for your personal and economic demise? This scenario could be a certain reality for over 50 of our homeowners in this Chambers County, in our area, who have carved out a life and a livelihood for themselves and their families over several decades. Cattle farmers, horse breeders, and others with small tracts of land who saw a simpler life lived by the water that is provided naturally from underground aquifers, trapped in rock cavities for hundreds and perhaps thousands of years. No underground flowing water is occurring here in the Casita community to nourish people or cattle. Water is only available in the trapped rocks in this upper pedant of Alabama, and once it is drained, this water to wells and ponds will not return. Other communities facing the same destruction from a proposed quarry have a solution that would connect them to a municipal water system. The area within this proposed quarry has no such solution. The three water municipalities that could possibly service this area of Chambers County have already said that they do not have the water capacity and that running water lines to the area would be financially prohibitive and would take years to complete. With a stroke of your pen, you have the power to determine the fate and destruction of an entire beautiful, vibrant, and thriving farm community, turning it into a desolate, uninhabitable wilderness. Can you afford to be so cavalier with your actions? Can you rest peacefully knowing that you are instrumental in the destruction of an entire community? Please consider the longer view from before you give permits for this area quarry. Does this quarry have the right to bring destruction and havoc to this peaceful and serene part of Alabama? I think it would be a tragedy of epic proportions to allow this. One man's short-sighted greed and selfish act in disregarding his entire community should not take precedence over the innate rights of others to enjoy the peace and security of their own property.
I will now proceed to the receipt of comment from members of the public. If anyone has prepared a statement that cannot be presented in the five-minute timeframe, please use your time for oral testimony to summarize your comments and submit your full statement to the department in writing for placement in the record. I'll call on Alice Robertson-Pitts. And up next will be Denise Prager-Sheely.
So I have 50,000 minutes. I'm Alice Robertson-Pitts. My father's family and extended family have owned land in the Danway, Casita, community since the early 1800s. I live about a mile, by the way the crow flies and air travels, from the projected location of the quarry. The area is an established community and still growing because we have a lot to offer families in the agricultural community. A lot of the hoods are based on cattle, horses, crops. We have wildlife that will run out of the natural habitat. And most importantly, we have our families. First, we as a community want to be proactive. We want this permit stopped before it's approved. We know that once a quarry has permits and opens, there's little hope to closing. We as a community are fighting to prevent this quarry from getting a permit. I'm a trimmer because none of this is my expertise. Most of us are laymen in this process. I've looked over charts, reports, stats, and must admit, I still don't understand most of it. Keep in mind one thing, the quarry permit The quarry permit has work hours from Monday through Friday, eight to six, and Saturday, eight to twelve, with the option of twenty-four seven, seven days a week. I was in manufacturing business for over fifty-plus years, and I can tell you now the option would be the norm. The quarry will negatively affect our community twenty-four seven, seven days a week, fifty-two weeks of year, year after year, inside and out. There's no escaping it. The water, ponds, and everything will be contaminated, and there's no doubt that we know that, from past quarries that we've gotten information from. I was, from my research, it's not if, but when an issue will come up that will affect everyone. And A.D.M. showed, does not have a quarry that has not had any complaints. As a matter of fact, talking to them out front, when you ask them if what we do, if a problem comes up, of course, everybody says, "You just sue the quarry." Well, hang on, quarry, we're gonna get some suing. Nowhere on the permit does, of the application, does it ask what community businesses, livelihoods will be affected, nor does it question community health issues, much less the land values affected. What I do know is that anyone can make numbers read anything they want to. If the submitted permit application has their numbers within the A.D.M.'s requirements, then it passes. By looking at the complaints, family on website, none of the so-called numbers provided by the so-called study is right. The process seems to set up those who oppose the permit for failure. The quarry must open first before you can prove the damage will be done, but what we do have is history. Look at the complaint. I realize that you, as the A.D.M. Committee Board, look at the numbers that the quarry provides, and that's an honor system that beats all, is all checked, all boxes are checked off, and the permit is issued. My suggestion would be taking past quarry applications and compare the submitted numbers versus the actual numbers. The air quality of the dust is significant, it certainly causes significant health hazards including various respiratory ailments. The dust travels at least three miles. Air quality is not something you can always see, but you can't hide from it either. You'll be affected inside and outside of your home. Dust covers everything, your homes, vehicles, your yards, everything, and the damage to the property. And most concerns to everyone is the breathing, is breathing the air that causes health, long, long-term health issues. The odors seem to be overwhelming at times. That certainly can't be good for you. Due to the, due to the inconsistency, well, I went to a water, I'm sorry, went to a water meeting back in November twenty-four, and my understanding, our water level supplies on a fractured system, and due to the inconsistency and unpredictable flow patterns within the fractured water formations, making it challenging to manage water extraction, particularly leading to water issues and availability and quality. We were told that A.D.M. only addresses air and water, which leads me to think A.D.M. isn't concerned about the safety issues that come with the quarry. This would include the roads covered gravel and dust and trucks, and some complaints on the vehicles being damaged and the debris falling from trucks. Home foundations and roofs are damaged. Now, step back and look at the numbers. If this were being put in your backyard, with your family being exposed to everything you know about quarries, be honest, would you approve it? I bet you would question the studies referenced, knowing that would be, knowing that it would be worse than noted on the applications. When I looked at the complaints filed on three different quarries and researched all the complaints, they were the same over and over. One of the most common files back in two thousand and five even was, of course, the air. The fibers found on personal property and in homes. Water runs off contaminated wells, runs off and contaminates wells and ponds. These quarries have been in business for years. The complaints are consistent over the years with nothing changing. They respond to complaints with, we investigate it within our allowed standards, no valid findings that day, and the common fix for dust is, we'll add more water trucks. Really? I'm sure that questions have taken-
Let me catch you off real quick. How much longer is your statement?
Let me get down to the bottom of the card.
Okay.
Right here. Sum it all up. The quarry brings destruction, and it's year after year. A forced life change that should not be acceptable. The damage, the damage is irreversible, and there's no escaping it. Please let us have a say about what's best for our local community. Don't sell us out on a promise from a few that's only looking to benefit, to benefit military from this project.
Denise Prather Shealy.
Yes, sir.
Next will be Valerie Gray. Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name in the name of any interest or organization you may represent.
Denise Prather Shealy, and I speak for grandmothers and farmers. First, this, the permit will require them to wet down their trucks on site, but it, by the time it rides down the dirt road, three eighty-eight, that road is two miles long, that, that, on a, on a hot summer day, it'll be dry and dusty by the time it gets past my house, and so I'll be having dust on my yard. I've already got allergies. My grandchildren have allergies. What is that gonna do to our lungs? You talked about air quality. What is that gonna do to us? We've already got trouble. We don't need anymore. I, I don't want the road paved. People already drive too fast on it, and, and if it got paved, people'd be driving like bats out of you-know-where. And there are at least four school buses that travel that road, and I hate to think of, of what, all this traffic on that road with those four buses, one of which carries my two babies on it. I just built a house, a brand-new house. I can't afford to move. I'm stuck there. My land is under contract for, for solar panels, and if, and if, and if they back out because of this dust, I will have no income. What am I gonna do? No income. Dust would ruin my land for, for cows. It would make the cows sick. It would make it difficult to grow trees, hay. Nobody would want to buy hay that has that dust on it, make it difficult to lease to hunters. There are six houses, all on wells, on my property. There are three additional wells. Those wells have run sprinklers to, to irrigate. They have fed, they have watered cows all over the property. They have watered hogs. But we already know that with quarries, there won't be any more wells. I've got a pond on my property, a beautiful, well, some people call it a lake. It's large enough to be called a lake, but it's fed by spring. But that spring will be the first thing to go, and then I'll just have a muddy, muddy hole. Now, in, in, in Beauregard, when the quarry sucked everything down, they wound up with, with sinkholes. Are we gonna have sinkholes too? I know that we're talking granite as opposed to limestone, but are we gonna have sinkholes? I inherited this land from my father, and I was looking forward to being able to pass it on to my children as being something wonderful, but is it gonna be worth anything when they get it?
Valerie Gray. And Burt Harris is next.
Please step up, repeat your name and any interest you may represent. Good afternoon. My name is Valerie Gray, and I'm the retired economic developer for Chambers County, but I'm here today to represent my children and my friends in Casita, my children who attended public schools. A lot of what has already been said is what I had written down, so I'm gonna, I'm not gonna be very long at all. I would like to respectfully ask all of you at A.D.M. to please take under very careful consideration the application that's been submitted. I've picked apart several errors in there, and it's, it's very concerning to me. As an economic developer, I am pro-growth, pro-business. I understand aggregate materials, but I also had a responsibility and still have a responsibility to my community to do right by the environment. Basically, will you be here in five years to regulate? Will you be here in twenty years to regulate or fifty years to regulate? Hopefully, the regulations will be even more stringent upon that time, but I'm asking you to have foresight of the impact that this will have on my citizens' water supply in that area, as well as what I consider economic development, agriculture, industry. We have thriving businesses in this area. In some, in summary, I would just like to say that, I don't know why I'm so nervous. I don't know why. I've, I've been speaking publicly for twenty-five years, but I, I guess it's because I'm so passionate about this, and I know how devastated my friends and my family members are in this community. Mr. Laney spoke about the lack of community growth. I can guarantee you, if this happens in Casita, they will drastically impact our community growth. And thank you for your time.
Robert Harris is next. Please step up and repeat your name and any interest you may represent.
Yes, my name is Burt Harris, and I'm blessed to be the part of the fifth generation of Harris's living on the Harris Farm on Casita Road. My brothers and I are committed to preserving our farm so it can be place of, a place of peace and beauty for generations to come. We're also committed to historic preservation. In the nineteen seventies, my father, John T. Harris, and mother Eleanor Harris moved a dog trot home located northeast of Lafayette to our farm so it could be saved and restored. This home was built in the eighteen thirties, and it served as the first Chambers County courthouse before the county seat was moved to Lafayette. Few years later, we moved the Casita Methodist Church to our farm to save it from destruction. These important and historic buildings are still maintained and in good condition, along with several other historic homes and structures on our farm. The Casita area is a very special place with a rich history, and we want to preserve that history. Now, as I read the A.D.M. application, I saw a reference to a report from MRS Consulting titled Phase One Cultural Resources Survey for a proposed two-hundred-and-fifty-four-acre quarry project, Chambers County, Alabama. So this survey was conducted, conducted not because they wanted to, but because it is required. This is Phase One survey. In the survey, they, they took samples of soils and everything and looked for artifacts and several old building sites and stuff. There was thirty-six acres that had been, that had been covered with sludge, and they were not examined because of a fire hazard. Thirty-six acres out of two-hundred-and-forty were not even looked at. Now, to me, that's not a completed study. That's fifteen percent of the study area was not even studied. And the study found that this, there is a historic home across the road from this site. And the, the home, this says this identified historic resource is considered potentially eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. It was built in eighteen forty-five. This is a two hun, or one hundred-and-eighty-year-old home, and it's right across the street from what would be a crushing station and loading and all of this kind of stuff. And it recommends that, therefore, the A.C.H., meaning Alabama Historic Commission, should review these findings and comment regarding any potential impacts to the historic property posed by the proposed quarry project in Chambers County, Alabama. So they identified a structure that's potentially eligible for the, for the historic rec, for the National Register of Historic Places, and said it should be further evaluated by the Alabama Historic Commission. I don't know if that's been done. I haven't heard from anybody that it has. And under the criteria for these studies, it says Phase One is the preliminary survey. That's been done. Phase Two is more detailed testing and evaluation of identified sites to determine their eligibility for the National Register of Historic Places. Well, they've identified one that's potentially eligible. Phase Three is mitigation measures such as data recovery or preservation if it's scientists found to be significant. And we've done Phase One, although we really didn't do a complete Phase One because thirty-six acres were not studied. And to my knowledge, the historic structure that was identified in Phase One has not been further evaluated. So I would ask that they complete the process and follow the rules that are set up for historic structures. Thank you.
Next will be sounding Allen.
Robert Harris. I am the brother of Burt Harris, who just spoke, and part of the Harris Farm. It has been there for gen, five generations and, and was formed in eighteen forty, eighteen twenty-one, and has a lot of history, and we've been involved with the Casita-Chambers County area for many generations. There are many reasons to be concerned about this proposed quarry coming to Casita, as you've heard from previous speakers. My concern is based on the location, and our concern is based on this location. Rocky Glades Fund has chosen a location with no trees to surround the site, no backup water source for the citizens of Casita that rely on wells and some of the poorest county roads. In case you did not know, this location will sit on the corner of two county roads with no trees as a barrier for nearby houses, cattle farms, horses, and traffic. No tree buffer means there is nothing to trap or slow down dust generated from blasting, crashing, and transport. Fire, fine particulate matter can spread to nearby homes, farms, ecosystems affecting air quality and human health. This can cause respiratory issues and even cause cancer. Trees act as a sound barrier. Without them, noise from the machinery, blasting, and trucks can travel much farther. They can disturb nearby residents, wildlife, cattle, and horses. Tree roots help slow the fil, and filter water runoff. Without a tree buffer, there will be increased soil erosion and sediment, oils, and other contaminants that enter nearby streams, wetlands, aquifers, and citizens' wells. Also, without a tree buffer, local wildlife corridors are broken. Nesting birds, small mammals, insects, amphibians lose habitat and are exposed to this disturbance. Area is home to several endangered and protected species, as well as a beloved population of bald eagles. There's also a danger to vehicles that travel these two county roads. Who's responsible when fly rock hits these vehicles and causes damages to the car worse than accident? Can A.D.M. tell us if there are any quarries that do have a tree buffer? Does A.D.M. not require this site to have a tree buffer? This site sits in the middle of a community, this has a valuable, vulnerable water source. The citizens and livestock of this community rely on private wells, as you've heard before. No municipality can serve them if their water runs out, because this area sits on a fractured water table. These wells have been in potential to dry, run, run dry on, or become contaminated. Explosive use to break granite often contain chemicals like ammonium nitrate and fuel oil. These can leach out into the ground and mitigate, migrate into groundwater, especially of blasting near these fractures. Heavy machinery used in quarries requires fuel, hydraulic oil, and lubricants. Spills and improper storage can cause petroleum-based contaminants to reach the groundwater. Will A.D.M. require regular water and well testing? Can you tell us if there's any quarry in a location whose citizens and animals solely- Heavy machinery used in quarries requires fuel, hydraulic oil and lubricants. Spills and improper storage can cause petroleum-based contaminants to reach the groundwater. Will ADEM require regular water and well testing? Can you tell us if there's any quarry in a location whose citizens and animals solely rely on private wells with no other source of water? The quarry site is located on County Road 389 and 290. Both of these roads are in poor condition currently. Most quarries are located on state roads, or at least in close proximity to state roads. The roads are five and nine miles from the nearest state road. The quarry being placed at this location will ruin these roads and the citizens of Casita's and Chambers County travel to work, school and church and wherever they go. This quarry site makes no sense for the people of Casita and Chambers County. No trees, no water source and roads that are in poor condition will not work, and the people of Casita's health, our well and welfare are at stake. Please take these considerations that you'll hear from previous and the rest of us about bringing a quarry to this beautiful area that has a lot of history and a lot of progress that this quarry is not here. Thank you.
Sally Island. Next will be Charles and Mary. Charles and Mary.
Carl. My name is Sally Ossebrook Island. I am proud to say that I grew up on a farm in Casita, Alabama. But almost 50 years later, I am now one of many people who live and/or own property in Casita who are concerned about the impact that a quarry in our quiet community would have on our livelihood. Our family home and farm is one and a half miles from the proposed quarry location. I appeal to you to consider the many risks to the air and water that my family and our neighbors in Casita will inherit should you issue a final permit to Rocky Glades Quarry. Casita sits on the Piedmont Plateau and relies on a unique fractured rock aquifer. Quarry activity would exploit the vulnerable nature of our water supply from surface activity contamination and breach of the confining layers of rock.